I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which this stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start this meeting with consent items and the approval of the minutes. We have December 19th, January 4th organizational meeting, and then the January 4th study session. Did anybody have any questions or concerns on any of those changes? Unless there's an objection, take a motion to approve all three of those.
So moved.
Motion by Jenny, second by Mark. Any questions or comments from the public? All in favor, raise your right hand. Katie?
Yes.
Motion carries. Six to zero. Okay, we'll move on to the financial report. Todd?
As we close out 2022, the Education Fund, we had receipts of $1,019,364.57. We had month-to-date expenses of $1,171,631.11. Cash balance at the end of December in the Education Fund is $859,827.83. Debt service fund, we had receipts of $1,338,829.3. Expenses of $1,727,676.75. Cash balance at the end of December in the Debt Service Fund is $856,668.69. And the Operations Fund, in December, we had receipts of $1,255,640.40. We had expenses of $209,894.46. Cash balance at the end of December in the Operations Fund is $1,126,872.71.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments, concerns about any of that? Can I have a motion to go ahead and approve the funds report then?
So moved.
Move by Ethan, second.
I'll say it.
By Mark. No further comments, all in favor. Katie's an aye.
Aye.
Pass six to zero. Approval of the claims. We had all total $3,519,911.86. Were there any questions, comments, or concerns about claims?
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Katie.
If you look at, okay, sorry, Todd, page 16, row 6.
Which one did?
I'm sorry, on the claims?
Yeah.
It says, do we really pay $5,613.17 a month for Zoom? Or is that an annual fee?
Oh, I see.
Page 16.
We paid that monthly, it's $14.99.
Oh, I see where you said, yeah, where's his Zoom monthly subscription?
What'd you say? Is that, is that correct, or am I mistaken?
Amber's trying to look right now. We may have to research that and get back to you. That doesn't seem, that, I kind of wonder if we didn't choose the wrong vendor for that amount possibly. That seems, that seems.
Research that.
If it's on the wrong line.
Yeah, we paid that monthly, $14.99 a month because we used it for the board meeting.
That seemed unrealistic.
Something, something's askew there. We'll find out and get back to you.
Okay, well, I want to, I want to know where the other $5,000, you know, $600 is.
Subscription.
I mean, we've been, that's not been an ongoing thing. I hadn't noticed that before, but it's not been an ongoing thing.
Not for that amount, no.
Okay.
Well, we'll, we'll find out unless there's.
Do you want to approve all the claims but that one, since we're not sure if it's a misapplied vendor? Or is, but while that's being researched?
So we'll just say set aside.
We've done that before.
Set aside, line six of page 16. Prove otherwise.
Good catch. Katie, anything else? Anybody else have any questions or concerns? No, I'll take a motion to approve the claims with taking, there's no way to.
I may have an answer. I can research it a little bit if you give me a moment.
Do you want me just to push the vote down to the bottom and go on to the.
If you would like to, I can research that.
I'll do that. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the payroll for December 30th, 2020, and January 13th, 2023, totaling $914,825.65. Any questions, comments, or concerns about that? Barring none from the public, we'll take a motion.
I move we approve the payroll for December 30th, 2022, and January 13th, 2023.
Motion by Jenny?
So moved.
Steven? All right, yes, Steven. Okay, all in favor? Aye from Katie. Motion passes six to zero. Next item of business is the mileage rate change for the Rochester Community School Corporation. The, our policy basically states that we will follow the federal standard. And IRS issued a standard mileage rate increase for 2023 for business use, increasing it three cents per mile. So beginning January 1st of 2023, the standard mileage rate for the use of a car, also vans, pickups, or panel trucks, will be 65 and a half cents per mile driven for business use, which is up three cents from the mid-year of 2022. Twenty-two cents per mile driven for medical or moving purposes for qualified active-duty members of the armed forces, consistent with increased mid-year rate increase in 2022. Fourteen cents per mile driven in service or charitable organizations, which is also up from 2020. So I don't know if those really affect.
No, what really applies, and we needed the board to be aware of, is the policy does state that we'll follow federal mileage, but this is just an awareness, making sure that you understand that increase and that we have approval to go ahead and reimburse at that rate.
Any questions? Anything from the public? Barring none, take a motion to approve utilizing the new mileage rate.
So moved.
Just moved by Mark.
Second.
Second by Steven. All in favor, raise your hand. Katie's an aye. Motion passes six to zero. The approval of the S R three expenses as presented. And this would have been from the way that they were presented in December's meeting?
It was an email.
Todd, do you want to go through the.
I.
The email.
Yeah, so those expenses were through the end of 2022. Some of that is explained in the next item as well. But basically, I'm asking for permission to allow those as S R expenses so we can reimburse a big chunk of change. It just helps cash flow to have that in our hands.
To, to capture some of that and working with R C T A, we just had that meeting and reported that to them as well. So $686,664.13 of that is for remediation, substitutes, FICA, all in. In regards to that, there is instructional equipment and fees at $167,914. Some upgrades that we did in regards to HVAC, server support, those types of things. And then supplies, technology, things that we have been using in regards to COVID and/or remediation updates, $10,117,792.50. So the first two would be reimbursements to, not, so when you didn't break it down by educational and operational, because some of the substitutes could be within.
That's, well, that stuff is all, a lot of that from 2022's, and the next is in number six, which is after plus, so.
So what was the grand total on that? One more time. Great, thank you. Any questions?
Was that an email that was sent to the board last, previous board? Was sent to us?
And Mark, I think we got that about a week and a half ago.
From Todd?
Yes.
He sent it on January 19th.
Mark, I just emailed it to you. I just wrote that into you.
It was originally mailed on, on the 19th.
The 19th.
There, no, I already have it. I do have it, I overlooked it, sorry.
Any other questions? About the S R three funds? Barring none, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Ethan. Second by Katie. All in favor? Katie's an aye, motion passes six to zero. Next would be the approval of the inter-fund transfers, the intra-fund transfers, and the check disposition. Todd, do you just want to?
I'll just, yeah, and I'll probably work backwards. The disposition of checks report, there was checks in the corporation, there's one check from Riddle and five from the high, or one from middle school and five from the high school. Middle school check totaled $50, the high school checks totaled $150. Corporate total was $744.7. This is, these are checks that were written two years ago, or so, two years, December 31st, 2022, two years before that or before, that are void by state law and asking for approval to void those out of the system.
Do we want to go ahead and vote on these individually?
And I'd go through the rest, or if you want, I mean.
I think going, I think doing each one would help keep it clear for auditor.
Any questions, comments, or concerns about the disposition of the checks? Anything from the public? Take a motion to approve?
So moved.
You get to choose.
Motion by Jenny. Second by Steven. All in favor? Motion passes six to zero. All right.
Okay, so the transfers, the intra-fund transfers of appropriation, no appropriation line item can be in the negative at the end of a calendar year. And this piece, this report just goes through and talk, explains or shows how much that I had to move around to make those line items.
Todd, can I ask a question?
Of course.
As I'm trying, you know, it's only been two years, but I'm trying to learn about these things, and it's not easy. It would be helpful to me, I mean, what fund did it come out of and what did it go into, other than I just moved this money?
Well, this, okay, so this is, this one is technically, I'm not moving any money. This is moving an appropriation that was set at the beginning of the year. And for whatever reason, whether a change in programming, health, you know, cost, I missed a cost estimate or whatever stuff comes in negative, we just take the appropriation. Line items where there's positive appropriations are used to offset items where there's negative appropriations.
Got it. I didn't, I guess I missed that detail. I do know what an appropriation is. Thank you for that clarification.
Appropriation is what we are putting, are putting forward to, say, we spent in a specific line item, life insurance at the high school, or FICA at the middle school, or, you know, whatever.
Okay. Thank you, Todd.
So those, those in total, the three, we do that in the Education, Debt Service, and Operations Fund, the total of those transfers, $4,695,584.51.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Comments or concerns? Anything from the public? Barring none, I will take a motion.
I move that we approve the 2022 year intra-fund transfers.
Motion by Ethan.
Second.
Second by Steven. Barring no other comments, all in favor? Katie's an aye. Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, now, the last one is transfers that were made between funds. And I tried to be a little more descriptive on this, Katie. And then I alluded to this in the, we're talking about the S R money. We transferred $664,536.42 from the Education Fund, expenses from the Education Fund to S R three. And we transferred $351,738.52 in expenses from the Operations Fund to S R three. The other significant transfer was from debt service to textbooks to cover our free and reduced.
I didn't say anything.
Free and reduced expenses. The last three that are listed, or four that are listed, are just cleanup of minor things that happened through the year to, to get those cleared at a more accurate level or zeroed out. The clearing accounts are used for benefits in and out, for insurance, taxes, money goes out of payroll, or out of our checks into those accounts, and we pay the IRS, or we pay the state of Indiana out of those, and they're in and out, they're not there to have any money in them, just out of convenience. Those transfers totaled $1,064,562.74.
Now, Todd, on the sentence, under recommendation on the actual signature sheet, it says it's recommended that intra-fund, as he says, whichever one we sign, scratch that off and put inter.
I found a lot of typos between the times, got post, at the time that I think this is the missing one.
It's okay. Any other? Any other questions or comments about those transfers? Board members, public? Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion once the typo is corrected for the mission.
Motion by Steven with the correction of the tackle, second. By Mark. No other comments. All in favor? Approval of the inter-fund transfer. Motion passes six to zero. Amber, do you want me to move out of the financial? Did you find the?
I am not able to put my fingers on it quite yet. So maybe, we may need to rectify it tomorrow, so, whatever Deanna recommends.
I would say let's move forward with the claims, pulling that one out, so that we can pay those, and then we'll make sure that we get the information to you.
I skimmed through the motion board, what's claims of finding the Zoom payment and whether they're, if it does appear, it's usually $14.99. It's spotty whether it's in any of them, actually, I noticed.
That would have actually been a charge on our Visa card. That's the vendor that we paid, and I think maybe the description's incorrect. It wouldn't have been a Zoom payment per se, but maybe some curriculum programs that we use, and I just can't put my fingers on it quite yet. I feel.
You think that was the credit card payment?
It, it was paid, the voucher, or I'm sorry, the vendor number is Teachers Credit Union, so it would have been a charge on our Visa, and I think possibly I failed to change the description. So I feel like it was a charge on the Visa, but it wasn't necessarily for Zoom per se.
Oh, okay.
So does Zoom not consistently show up in the claims? Because as, like I said, when I went back and skimmed through, it's hard to find some ones that's not there, some ones it is.
It's always an automatic payment through Teachers Credit Union. It's an automatic payment on appropriation Visa, so it will never be under Zoom per se. It will be under the Teachers Credit Union.
Well, I found one like February of '22 whose claims has Zoom subscription fee, $14.99 as one of the line items, but not almost any of the others do, so I didn't know if that was in a abnormality.
It just depends on the Teachers Credit Union, how quickly I have them reconciled.
Okay.
Because I know, I apologize, when I was out for my knee, there were a few that didn't get reconciled promptly, so hopefully you'll see them more frequently as things progress.
Thank you, Amber.
You're welcome.
So we'll go back to the claims. If no one else has an issue with that, we'll take a motion to approve without that particular line item. And I think, did we, didn't we have a motion?
I don't think we did.
I can say, I can say, I move that we approve the claims barring line six of page 16.
Very good. Second.
I'll second.
Jenny seconds. There's no other comments, all in favor? Motion passes six to zero. We'll move on to the donations report. Donations to Rochester Community Schools, Columbia Elementary, winter gloves for students donated by Beth Miller. Columbia Elementary, hats and gloves for students, Community Presbyterian Church. Columbia Elementary, hat and gloves for students, Blue Apple Group at Grace Church. Riddle Elementary, and that was, I'm sorry, for $40, or Riddle Elementary for $40 for school lunches, an anonymous donor. At Riddle Elementary, $300 to pay off school lunches for students in need, also an anonymous donor. Riddle Elementary, coats for students in need, The Cross. Riddle Elementary, coats for students in need, Fulton County Pack, a backpack. Riddle Elementary, hat, gloves, and socks for students, Community Presbyterian Church. RMS, $1,000 Walmart gift card from Pat Macy. And then we also had a donation come in after this was printed from, for RMS from Grace Church for hats and gloves. RHS, we had $700 donated for senior breakfast by Teachers Credit Union. For Rochester High School, $300 prom donation by Brody and Jenny Moore family. And Rochester High School, $50 donation, prom donation from Erin and Rebecca Bowinger from their family. Once again, it's just amazing how much the community donates to the school system, and we definitely appreciate it and thank everybody for their generosity and kindness. Is there any questions? In the public? So we'll take a motion to approve the donations.
So move with the addition of the RMS donation of hats and gloves from Grace Church.
Thank you, Mark. Motion, Mark?
Second.
Second by Ethan. No other comments? Go ahead and take a vote. Motion to approve, raise your right hand. Motion approved, six to zero. And now we have the second reading of policies.
So those are all listed there. They also are uploaded individually, so they are easily accessible to read each individual policy. We did just a brief overview of each policy at the December meeting. All of the board members that are here today, were here then, most of the people in the audience were as well, so we are welcome to answer any questions about those, but I will consider reading, just having those available unless anyone has a question.
Do we need to read the numbers? Like reading off them, just having them go? Any questions, comments, thoughts? Okay. Another we need to do for that, right? All right, we will move on to faculty and staff focus with the personnel report. Personnel report for January 23rd, 2023, we have recommendations at Columbia Elementary for Ashley Shuck, kindergarten IA position, hourly rate $12. Vanessa Cross, daycare assistant, hourly rate $12.51. At RMS, Reagan Newton, agricultural teaching physician, annual contract $40,000. Rachel Enyard, instructional assistant, hourly rate $12.59. Adam Packer, instructional assistant, hourly rate $13.80. Savannah Stevens, Friday supervisor, second semester, stipend $500. RHS recommendations for winter intercession 2023. Ken Hughes, math, Ron Schaefer, math, Deb Wolf, math. Ryan Help, English, Eric Davis, English. Shirley Swift, attendance, pay will be at the individual's hourly rate. For food service, Jennifer Gebhardt, from cafeteria substitute to food service assistant, hourly rate $13.15. In the maintenance department, Donald Jervis, maintenance specialist, hourly rate $20. Athletic recommendations, Adrian Pollak, varsity schools tennis coach for 2023 season, stipend of $2,750. TJ DuBois, sixth grade girls basketball coach, volunteer. Mitch Bowers, K through two elementary basketball program 2023, stipend $900. Athletic resignation, Abby Overmeyer, K through two elementary basketball program. And FMLA, Tia Heichman, RHS, one. And FMLA, Tia Heichman, RHS, one nine until approximately one eighteen twenty-three, to care for her daughter. Melissa? Bell P. D. U. Thank you. I didn't want to push her. One nine twenty-three to approximately July ten of twenty-three. Any questions, comments or concerns? additions, corrections?
So I do have a question when it comes to employees on hourly rates. Are they, do we top them at forty hours a week or is it overtime?
There are. In cases, there are overtime and that has to be pre-approved by either the principal or myself or the director of that department. And it's a really good question. The other thing, Stephen, is all of our employees do have access, all of the full-time employee. All of our IAs and others are full-time and have access to benefits as well. I know that that, not every school offers that, but we do.
And part of the reason their rate is listed here, including teaching, you know, when their teaching jobs that come up, the rates are, is that's an auditing thing. So we're not, we're kind of approving the rate for them, but not really. We're just saying we acknowledge that this is what, this person is going to be matched to this rate.
But what the board has done in the past prior to the new board members coming on board, is there a, there's a pipeline that we try to renew and refresh. And the board approves those new case scale structures as well. And then the administrative team and myself and Kathy and HR try to go through and place them appropriately on that pipeline.
You?
Great. Any other questions? Okay, barring any other comments from the board or the public? I'll take a motion to approve personnel report. Move by Jenny?
Second.
Second by Ethan. No other comments? All in favor? Motion approved, six to zero.
If I may, Mr. Bowers, would you like to introduce your new member of your staff and welcome him aboard?
This is Don Jervis. Him and I have worked together for about ten years now. And we actually worked at the Foundry together. I actually started working for him and then got promoted up. And now he's coming to work for me.
Good mistake.
So he's ready for turnabout.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a couple of field trip requests. The first one would be for Mr. Pearson, RHS Agriculture. This would be a ski trip for a National FFA Week kickoff. And it's a bittersweet ski in Ossago, Michigan.
So this is a standard field trip that FFA takes every year. The reason for board approval is because we would be transferring kids across state lines. And so it's a Monday trip. It's been a great team building activity. It's a great relationship and kicking off the week. They do put in a lot of hard work. But the main purpose of bringing this particular one to the board is because we do take kids across state lines.
Any questions? Do you want to, you just want to do them all together? Anybody have an issue with that? If I just read through them and?
Yep.
Okay.
That's good.
That's good to me. The next field trip would be the FCC LA Leadership Conference. So we have Mrs. Snyder taking RHS. Actually, I think this was eight through twelve, wasn't it? Approximately twelve students.
Eight through twelve.
Eight through twelve, yeah. Mrs. Masterson would be taking students to Muncie for the State Leadership Conference. Any questions on that? Those are fantastic conferences.
It is a great opportunity for kids to, to network, to show leadership skills, to be able to present projects. All of those are culminated into these activities and it's a great opportunity for students.
And our last one would be for the Key Club International District Leadership Convention. This would be at the Crown Plaza in Indy. It would be six students. And the trip would be from February twenty-fourth through February twenty-sixth. Any questions or comments on any of that? Anything from the public? Okay, so take a motion to approve the three field trip requests.
So move. Katie's.
Katie's motion?
Katie's, wait, sorry.
Oh, Katie's second. She had to. All in favor, raise your hand. She's on Zoom. She can't talk back. It's a perfect opportunity. Take it.
Enjoy it while we can.
Yeah.
Hey, hey.
I thought it was on you. Sorry.
No, you didn't. I didn't.
And the last item would be superintendent business.
We'll begin by going around to each of the administrators and having them share successes from the last board meeting. Anything you may be working on behind the scenes and anything that the board or I could do to help you. So Jason, we can start with you if you want to share.
Yep.
We have just been, February is kind of an odd month because it's just short, short days and we don't, we don't do a lot of activities and stuff outside the building, but we were able to get Chrissy. Flynn was able to take her kids to the library last week and they had a great time doing that. I put some pictures up on Facebook for it, so if you haven't seen those, you can check out some of that. Mrs. Vance and I and our daycare hosted a tour from another corporation. We have been having people from other corporations and schools and even businesses reach out to learn more about what we're doing, to provide that service for our teachers. It was really good to just have somebody come in, get a fresh set of eyes and also, you know, kind of hear a little bit about what we're doing compared to other, other schools and stuff. And when we were building the program and putting it together, I went and took visits to other schools too. So it's just a nice networking piece that we do. We also just started up a, what we just started program, South Bend Cubs have a reading program where if you choose to sign up and you've become part of the program, the kids or the teachers in the classroom make goals for that class. And if the students, the individual students reach those goals for reading, then South Bend Cubs will provide them a game ticket to go up there and go. So we did this with one class last year and I think we had four kids go up, staff member who went up there and, you know, met the kid. Parents take the kids. We don't take the kids. Parents take the kids. It's an opportunity for them to, you know, go up and spend some time with their family as well, which is really important for us to provide those opportunities. And so we had a couple of kids go up, met them up there and got some pictures with them. They got to watch the game. So that was one class last year and this year the entire building is going to do it, including our daycare. Our daycare is going to set some goals to work with reading with those kids. Obviously, the infants will not be reading, but we can set goals to be to them, which we all know is very important as well. So the whole school's on board and we are working on that with the South Bend Cubs. And that'll be really, really cool for, I think, for our students and our parents, because I think a lot of kids are going to have some opportunities to do something that they've never done before. This coming up, we've got a couple of things coming up. We have a Star Card meal. You guys know that I like to do experiences with the kids versus just giving them things for their accomplishments. So our pre-K kids sometimes can't do the same things necessarily that some of our older kids can do. So we, we pulled out ten pre-K kids that have shown positive leadership and positive attributes in our building. And I'm working with the high school and the culinary class. I've mentioned this before, that we've done this once before, but now we're going to do it for the pre-K. And the culinary class is going to come to Columbia and cook a meal for the kids and host a meal for the pre-K kids. And it's cool because the high school kids get an opportunity to showcase some of their skills, but also the, the little kids love the high school kids. So just them being able to interact, be mentors and get to hang out with the high school kids for a little while and then also eat their food is huge for our little pre-K kids. And with it being in January, it's not a huge weather safety issue. So we're looking forward to having the high school kids over. We're working right now on finalizing our math adoption. We've got a meeting coming up on February first. And we've got several teachers that have been going to different places and doing different things to do that. But we feel like we're on a good, good track to do that and be ready to make our recommendation for spring break, which is always our goal. And we've got our kindergarten roundup and that will be April sixth. And we have been pushing that out via various media entities and that information is out there. It'll be held here at the Learning Center and it'll be all-day event and we'll keep you posted on that. It's a couple, a couple of months away, but it takes a couple of months to kind of get it up and going. So we do not need anything right now. Appreciate everybody's support.
Any questions for Mr. Pearson? Mr. Burnett?
Riddle, we're wrapping up our, Mrs. Walkman rather, is wrapping up her swimming unit. So she's been taking all the kids to the middle school and they've been having a great time. They'll talk about that all day. If it's their day to swim, you are going to know it. They're going to let you know so that, appreciate the middle school hosting us and Mrs. Walkman taking that on. Our third graders and our second graders will be taking I read coming up, but we have our intervention groups for our third grade have started this month, so we're, we're going with our third graders on that. As the other buildings of the corporation, we've got our math adoption going on, so I will be reaching out to the school board to have a member on our committee. We've narrowed it down to a couple, so we're ready to take that next step. And we're getting close to launching our one school, one book, I think at the end of February. So our, the committee there, I have to give a shout out. Hopefully I remember everybody. Joanna Johnson, Lisa Coulter, Lisa Brooks, Mandy McCarter. I think Nikki's on there as well. They've been working really hard. They've got some experiences maybe that will come into our building. So nothing's finalized yet, but I'm getting pumped. And I'll let you know when we do our launch date for sure. Love to have you there. It's, it's a magical experience. So if you were able to come, you will definitely want to come.
Any questions for Mr. Burnett? Mrs. Murphy?
So since the last board meeting, we did have our etiquette dinner, the annual etiquette dinner. That went very, very well. We had close to a hundred adults come from the community that day. And again, it just went very well. So those, the kids that come over, eighth grader JHS came over to help serve, seventh grader JHS also helped serve, and then the sixth grade student council helped. So that's what has happened before until now. And then what we're working on right now, we're working on the math textbook adoption. We're also working on getting those college field trips planned again that had kind of been on hold the last couple of years. So we're getting those grade level college field trips. Starting some groups, getting ready to think about I-Learn and how that's going to go and what that schedule's going to look like. And just struggling, also planning a Valentine's dance. The kids love that. Oh, we also had our PBI yesterday. The last day of school's always had PBI yesterday, so probably my favorite thing about that, well, two things. I love watching the staff compete with the students. There's some Facebook videos out there. If you haven't seen them, there's some funny staff videos as well. And also, we typically hear from just a couple of parents after each one of those, from whether their kid really enjoyed participating in games or they got some of the prizes, they felt recognized. And so it's always good to hear from parents in that way. Don't need anything? Just appreciate the continued support. Any questions?
Mr. House?
First, I want to thank the board for approving the winter intercession teachers. We had seventy-nine kids on Monday for intercession, which is huge because they can earn some percentage back to get the credit, which gets them across the stage. And so that was a big accomplishment for us, getting that many kids to show up. Hope and Val Hoover had a prom fundraiser during the Valley Boys and Rochester Boys game here, and they raised a good amount of money for prom. Senior nights, we've had all of our senior nights for the winter sports except for boys' basketball, and that will be coming up here in the next week or two. The Wizard of Oz musical was cast. We put that out on Friday at two forty-four PM and then hit our casting director until Monday at seven forty-five AM. So we got that posted. We're really excited about that experience. Recruitment information for our job fair has been sent out to our local community business partners. We had a successful one last year and we believe it's going to increase in the number of businesses coming and visiting with our juniors and seniors. We had seven girls who made it to the wrestling state. The team placed second, which is a big accomplishment as that's an emerging sport for the IHSA. We have a sweetheart dance coming up February eleventh. The outlets, I think it's Athlemo, yeah, is donating their space for that. So the kids are really excited. It's not going to be at the school. It's going to be out there. The principals of culinary class that is collaborating with Jason's building actually went to Warsaw to check out what they call the Blue Apron, which is their culinary program. Just so the board knows, that culinary program is starting to take off like a rocket ship. I'm really excited with what Mrs. Masterson and Mrs. Snyder have going on there in the building. The swim team, the boys got second and the girls got third at the TRC. And I believe girls' sectional is coming up here really quick for the swimming zebras. Wrestling team went and took first at the TRC. There's fourteen weight classes. We had nine athletes in the championships. Seven of those athletes won. And I believe all of our fourteen finished top five or higher in the conference. So they have sectional coming up approved on Saturday. We have our district band concert, solo and ensemble concert. To give a shout out to those students who are involved in band and choir and musical, that is as taxing of a schedule as there is compared to any athlete that you will meet. I was having that conversation with a young lady in the hallway and I really learned a lot about that time commitment. So that's very impressive for those students. So if you get a chance to come out and support them, please do. We had our bowling team participate in regional and we actually had a young man, Enrique Navarro, who won the regional championship for the bowling zebras. So I'm having a lot of success in those areas. And then we have FFA week coming up in the middle of February. I think we have another board meeting before, but we're going to host boys' sectional and basketball. So we have a lot of good things going on over at the high school. Any questions? And I'm sure I missed some stuff, but.
If, if you are going to use the culinary class, at least offer to pay for the food because they, they don't have the budget to just jump and make meals for kindergarten, pre-K kids that. I mean, they've got a budget, but they've already budgeted for stuff. So when you ask them to make meals, make sure that you pay for it because.
It seems like somebody's been told that.
No, I actually, I actually, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you, the truth is, I failed to do that. I asked for them to come do that. And then when they brought it, when they said, hey, how are we handling that? I couldn't even believe that I didn't even think about offering to do that. I felt really bad that I hadn't done that. Because I know what their budgets are like and how tight they are and I really felt, felt horrible that I didn't throw that out at the very beginning because they said they'd do it no matter what and they were going to figure out a way to pay for it. And we weren't going to let that happen. But I just want to tell you guys that because you'll definitely get, get a quick response if you say, and we're paying.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your, your time at our regular meetings. I know I really appreciate hearing what's going on and hearing from you guys.
Oh, Amber, something?
I do have an answer. When we pay Teachers Credit Union, that three hundred fund is a consolidation of anything that goes into our operations. Three hundred fund is an operation. So part of that is the maintenance department, part of that is curriculum, anything that we pay towards operating goes in there. The best part with this consolidated report is the first line only reads. So the Zoom line is the first line of the explanation. It's the consolidation of the whole operating fund that is paid by Teachers Credit Union, but it just so happens the first line said Zoom.
So like fourteen ninety-nine of it was Zoom and then?
And then the other thousand was. Because for instance, if you look at the one right above, it says for a freezer, well, we didn't pay that amount for a freezer. It's a consolidation of that operating fund every, but whatever I. It's a consolidation of that operating fund every, but whatever I enter for the first line just so happens to come out on the report that you guys see. But I can give you a breakdown of every single piece that went into that if you would like. But it's just conglomerating everything into that one fund number.
Good to know. Thank you, Amber.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
I apologize that I didn't have a media.
You got it done before the meeting.
Yeah. As I say, that's, that's a lot to dig through.
I didn't know how much Zooming we were doing and that expense.
Well, with the weather coming up this week, we may be doing more Zooming than we want.
That makes you for your patients.
Don't say too much.
I'll just share very quickly that Joel Lau is back over on the south side of the building. And our insurance has been very good to work with again. They came, they were very quick to respond. That's being put back together. Wendy Kug and his crew as well. They put a lot of time and effort into it. But things are getting back to order over there. Some other equipment is ordered and will be placed there. Also, for parents in community that is listening, that are listening out there, please make sure that you update information and contacts in harmony when we have inclement weather. We want to make sure that we're able to get ahold of you, especially on those times when we may have to do an early dismissal. We want to make sure that kids make it home safely, that we know where they're going, that we get them there as quickly as we can, as safely as we can. So please communicate with your building level administrators, with those secretaries to update that information. So we have that ready to go should, should we need it.
Real quick, since we got an answer on that, do we want to go back to the third line six from page 16? Since we know that it's just the conglomerated.
Good thought.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Motion, Maggie, then to go back to the claims and approve that line item for the Zoom monthly fee and other items in that consolidated credit graphing. Second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? All right, all in favor?
That's good.
Sorry, Katie. It wasn't a real question. Speak clearer. Any other comments from the board?
I do have a question that could be, well, directed towards Mrs. Vance, but then also Mrs. Murphy and Mr. Hawes. To kind of go side by side with the etiquette dinner that's offered at the middle school. Does this school corporation offer any type of ethics, advice, training for our students?
Ethics, like technology?
As just a, a common person, giving them support, direction on better ethics, just in general life. So I know there's a little bit that gets touched on in like health and wellness class. But just as general people, you know, especially in middle school where everybody's struggling and trying to figure out who's the king of the mountain.
I can tell you at the middle school through homeroom lessons made by Mr. Kramer. That's fifth grade through eighth grade. He supplies those lessons for teachers. So that's huge for them. They get it every other Wednesday at the middle school. Not sure, well, that's when they get it, but the high school, hopefully, they always show it on Wednesdays. But so they get that. And then in our fax class, Mrs. Worland does part of that with the eating and just different areas of etiquette. And then also in our technology class with Mr. Basham, he does some technology and social media etiquette. So those are the areas at the middle school that I know that they're touching.
I would think that the teachers on a regular basis are all.
Well, I think two.
Yeah, at our buildings and Luke's building, we do social emotional learning lessons with our counselors. And those go to, our counselors go to, and Luke, correct me if I'm misspeaking for how you guys are doing. But I mean, our, our counselor goes into every classroom and has lessons about different types of ethics. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say necessarily ethic specific, but you know, how to, how to solve problems with amongst friends. You know, how to socialize with people, dangers of internet type stuff. I mean, there's a whole laundry list of topics that they cover. And, and so that starts way down even at our, at our building.
And also, but within your star cards and stripe cards and letters for the whole PVI S program as well.
And zebra zone.
Yep.
We have a character trade every month that, that we focus in on. And the zebra zone are, is the culmination of that. But during the rest of the month, we're talking about, you know, honesty or, you know, whatever the trade is for that month. And our teachers utilize that, our counselors use that, we use it.
And Mark is right. Teachers just use normal teachable moments that come up every day. And just in, you know, they get work ethic points in class, like for showing up on time, being prepared, those, those soft skills as well.
Okay. I was in there, I forgot for a minute I brought up the question. But subbing, when I was a sub at all three of your guys' buildings, I've been there for a Mrs. McLean lesson, I've been there for a Mrs. Gard lesson, and I've been there for one of Mr. Kramer's videos. And I just wanted to, if you guys could thank them for me for all the work they put into that. Because those are really well thought out lessons and those are really well done. And I know the kids enjoy them, which is hard to do sometimes with lessons like that to get the kids engaged. But they're really well put together and I just wanted to thank them for that, you guys for, for having that in place.
Thanks for saying that. We'll pass it along.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I do have a comment as a parent. And kudos to Mr. Hawes's programs that they're running with Mr. Pearson and Mr. Lau. My son took an old frame of a barn that sat in our weeds, took it into Mr. Pearson's. The whole class has worked, rebuilt it. They're, they've rewelded everything. They've put new latches on it. They're now putting wood on it, which we, obviously his parents have purchased, but they as a class are working on it. They're now putting tin on it. And I'm going to have a brand new barn that these students laid out, drew out, did all themselves with, and Mr. Pearson had them call Odell's and order their own wood and various things. And as a parent, the things that they're learning and doing this, it's pretty amazing. So I hope to have pictures for everybody. My son Keegan did say he's not sure they're all OSHA approved. Mr. Pearson will sort through those, he said. But it's just a really, really, really cool skill that these boys are, are working together and learning and drawing out. And those are some, some things they just necessarily can't get out of a textbook. And I'm very thankful for your programs.
I checked the other day. Keegan did all the welds that are holding the roof together.
So if it blows off, it's, you know, my kids' fault.
Just happy to be in there and ask that question.
We had a chair break and Keegan goes, Charlie, that just needs a weld. Do you want me to go fix it? Yeah, so he and Brady Beck went down, fixed the chair, brought it back. And then wanted to know if they could get out of the homework assignment. No.
Teachable moment.
As a parent, I just would like to think how we build those boys in a different manner. And, you know, not every lesson is learned out of a book and there's some valuable things. And my favorite picture that I received was Drew Strasser was on the roof because he was the lightest of the crew with no shoes drilling the tin in. And it was just kind of an ideal moment all the way around. But I just wanted to say thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Amber. Appreciate your sharing.
I have a question. Hope?
Yes.
Are you still over there, Hope?
I am.
Okay. How's the funding coming for the prom?
Uh, it's coming. We think we're pretty close. Our next step was to ask our students, juniors, if your parents own a business or you work somewhere that you think would donate, would you ask? And so we're doing that. And then our next step, well, we're not quite there yet, but we are pretty close to being up there.
Okay, thanks for that.
You're welcome.
You still do fundraisers, magazines?
We act, no, nobody, Steven, magazines, really? What is this, 1975?
2002.
Actually, um, actually, we hadn't done a fundraiser in like since ever. We didn't do one, you and I did the prom even. The kids just, yeah, we did. Yeah, we did. Quit doing them because the kids pay $25 a person to come unless they can't afford it and we take care of it. But because of COVID, we didn't have the prom. And then we had a reduced number of kids. And actually, in order to break even, we need to charge the kids $35 a person. Val and I don't want to do that. So we're trying to catch up from our COVID losses plus put some cushion in there so the kids don't have to pay more and have a little slush for next year. So some fancy math, it'll be fine. It's our prom, so.
Maybe you could transfer us our funds over there.
Little inter, little intra.
We'll absolutely have to check our math, don't worry.
Any other questions or comments by the public, board members? Barring none, I'll take a motion to adjourn this meeting and we'll take, you want to take a short break before the financial meeting? Okay. Take a, what time? 7:30, so five minute break.
Don't call me.
A movie, Jack.
The dancers, no.
All in favor?